I was just completing one and a half when the meeting.
Wow, okay. Well, good luck on it.
I'm looking forward. Looking forward to getting through it.
Yeah.
You don't have me, my face out. You're awesome. Hi, I'm Miss Brenda.
Hey honey, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm wonderful, I cannot complain.
Good.
I could, but nobody will pay me no attention, so I don't want to waste my voice.
Brenda, how's it going?
Just fine, how are you?
I'm doing pretty well.
Hi Mayor. Hi Jerry. Hi Stanley. Hi Jim.
Was Jim on? I didn't see him.
Saw the top of his head, there he is, yeah, he's there. Dan's on. Jerry Stanley, the mayor. Jim. Dan, you.
Yeah.
There's Robert.
Hey Kim.
Hey Robert, how are you?
Pretty good.
I sent that back to your phone again.
Oh, okay, let me check it again then. See if it'll come up. It didn't let me open it.
It, it still won't?
No, I'm fixing to find out.
Oh, okay.
It didn't come through, Kim.
No. Okay, sorry about that, Robert, I know what's going on.
I don't know what's going on with it.
Six nine nine four. Four four five eight.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey Brenda, how'd you like my golf cart? Real cool. Everybody's getting those things now. Oh really? They're copying me. Riding around on the golf carts.
All right, do we have all the staff in?
Just a minute, Mark, are you in?
I'm here.
Okay. I believe.
All right, well now call the city council meeting to order for June 22nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, if you will, please bow with, head with me. Father Lord, we ask that you would be with us tonight, Lord, we ask that you would be here in this meeting with us, Father. We ask that you would send your Holy Spirit, Father, to be with us, Lord, lead us and guide us, Lord, to your will, Father, not ours, Lord. As we make the best decisions for the city, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam clerk, if you'll please call a roll.
Okay. Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, first up, we have Resolution 2020-01, extending the state of emergency.
I have a question, does it mean that when we extend it, that we can, we still can't have group meetings in person, that we still have to do Zoom?
Um, I mean, I don't believe that's true.
Oh. No. No. The fact that we can't countermand the state's laws regarding having a physical forum at the city hall, unless the governor has the executive order, which he has in place now, but it expires, and it's stated it's going to expire June 30th. Okay, unless he extends it within the remaining days, which I understand is not entirely likely, we're going to have to have in-person meetings at, at the next meeting, at least a physical forum. If anybody has, you know, health issues and so on, you might want to still make the virtual meeting format available.
Okay. All right, well, no action is needed on the extension. Next up, we have the consent agenda minutes from June 8th, 2020. Be looking for a motion.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda minutes from June 8th, 2020, regular council members meeting?
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, do we have any questions or corrections?
I just have one correction, on section E, the motion by Jim Bernard was amended to make sure that that contract for the CBA went as far back as the original date of signature, I think it was December something.
Okay, is there any objections to that?
No.
No. Nope.
Seeing none, we'll consider that change, is there any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number six, we have a request approval for the water meter purchase. I see city manager's name down here, do you want to brief us on this, or do we have any questions?
Well, are these going to be inventoried, because I have to backtrack a little bit, if I can, if you allow me. I was looking at the budget adjustments, there's one in there for the water department where they're paying for, I don't know if it was encumbered, or they were spent in last year and we're making the adjustment this year, but are these right here for this year, or is it part of the budget adjustment continuity? I recalled statements by the water department that they were going to install these on a schedule, so are we still on schedule? And that sort of thing.
This is money in this year's budget, and as I brought up when I first got here, I thought there was a little skirting of the purchasing policy by just buying $24,000, and I'd rather to buy the 250 of them to come in front of you. We're down to about, according to Rick, we're down to about 60 of them. So, although from the last time you approved this, they put almost 200 of them out, maybe down 50 now, so. On a regular basis, they replace them, because I think when I started, there was 900 of them that needed replaced.
So, so Mark, so this was, this was been from the current budget that we're already in now? This is not part of the adjustment, maybe, I don't, is that correct?
No, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I motion that we approve the purchase of the sole source provider water meters in the amount of, I'm looking at the estimate here in front of me, $48,500.
I'll suck it.
From the Avanti company, by the way, let me put that back in there, okay?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number seven, we have a request for potable water from John Mullins. I received an email from Mr. Mullins, as I'm sure most of you did. Mark, do we have any updates for him on where that build out is?
I, I spoke to Mr. Mullins, he told, on Friday, I spoke to him at length, and I spoke to him several times since it started here. And he told me he wanted to be pulled off from the agenda, but it was too late.
Okay.
But, right now, we've probably, since I've been here, there's 10 people, there was just one last week that got hold of Ken that said they had been promised to have water under their house. And, um, right now, we're not running any water, Rick's guys are barely keeping up with fixing what we have. So, I had a nice talk, and I've had many with John, in fact, we're going to go down and have coffee at Starbucks if we can ever get down there one day, if things are opened up. But, like I said, I spoke with, with John at length, had a nice, nice talk with him.
So, this being pulled?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Mark.
Is he going to come back at some future date?
Well, I, I keep in contact with him, or he's, can call me anytime he wants, but like I said, it, it's, it's, once a week, we're hearing from somebody that somebody promised them to run water to one house, and it makes no sense. We need a plan, it'd be nice to have a public works director in there, and we could set zones up or have some master plan on where we're going to run water, instead of just running it to one person, not knowing if anybody else is going to hook, get hooked up. Right now, that's what we're running into. But again, I don't think the city's run, put pipes in the ground, run water, I think the last time was when they came about 100 feet from my house, I'm probably 100, 120 feet from Maine, and actually, I just spent $1,800 getting my water fixed, but, Rick doesn't have the guys to do it, he can barely, he's two down, he can barely keep up with God, actually, John Mullins is on, I can see him right now.
Okay.
John, if you can hear us, you need to unmute yourself.
Mark, I got a question that, when you, never mind, I'm good.
Okay.
Well, I do have a question, and maybe it's more of a comment than a question, I mean, I know that you've mentioned, Mark, that we just don't go out and willy-nilly put them out there, and that, from what I recall, that really wasn't the case. Maybe we installed it for one person who had a contaminated well. But I do know that in the past, there was a grant written for polluted wells, and those individuals, those, those wells were, or rather, those lines were paid for by a specific grant. Mr. Mullins, on the other hand, from what he had told me, and I've spoken to him several times, as you know, he said there's about eight people on his street, and, you know, if we're going to have a master plan, shouldn't it be based off of, you know, those that want it versus us just creating a plan and, and, you know, bringing it and not knowing whether people want it or not? One of the things that was going to be done in the past was get an estimate of what it would be to, to put it in there. And if he had eight people, that he, he says that he has people down the street, and those tap fees end up being what pays for the line itself, then it actually would be a good thing, and do that without a master plan. We talk about master plan, we're a year away from that, and, you know, part of our goal is to have outside residents that are not annexed and pay that extra 25%, which subsidizes the rest of the city residents and keeps our rates low. So, you know, rather than waiting for people, it just seems like we keep waiting and waiting and waiting for people to show up or do this or that, that we don't have, and it just seems like we're stuck, and we can't progress or move or expand. So, could we at least get an estimate on what it would be? Now, I know that in the past, we had our own people that would dig the trench, work on the right of way. I mean, do we still have people that know how to do that and, and capture right of ways with the county and permitting and all that? Or is this something that we would have to farm out?
That'd be a question for Rick, he should be on here.
Rick, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I tried to queue in earlier, and some reason they didn't come in. We had the staff, and we, that didn't know how to do it, but the problem is, is the staff right now, I mean, the issues going on right now, that we don't really have the time, I mean, we had, what, I think, seven breaks last week. Today, you know, the gravity line on North Central, I believe the clay pipes broke, and I believe we're going to lose that road. So, I mean, you know, right now, we're so busy with everything else, that the five people I got, they can't cover, you know, putting in 30 to 40 meters a week, changing them out, along with callouts, breaks, and everything else to, to even try to think about trying to run water lines, you know, you need at least a two to three man crew to do that.
So, what you're saying, if, if I get it right, is that regardless of a master plan, that we could have still done it if we weren't so busy doing other things, you didn't, you know, or even if we had a master plan, and we have the current staffing issues, we still wouldn't be able to lay it, so I mean, it's, it's like it won't get done, because A, we don't have a staff, or B, we don't have a master plan. So, you know, what does it need, what do you all need to be able to do these expansions? These people need water, you know, and, you know, this guy's itching, and, you know, we've provided it to others in need, and I see it as a necessity for this individual and the people down the street. So, you know, what, what is it that you need? We need to budget this for next year and do a master plan? You know, hire more people, or?
Yes, ma'am, well, you know, if that's what you want, I, I would like to be given the time to come up with something instead of just belting it out, right this minute. But if you can give me till the, the next meeting to come up with a, with a, you know, a plan or something, I would love to present it to you. And, and I would love to see that the city grow and expand, and, and give these people water. You know, I, I think it'd be great, both for the city and the customers, and the people out there. So, yes, I, I would like to see us do that.
Do you have?
Write it up, instead of just, just belting something out, you know.
No, of, of course, of course, and I know that all those other, you've got to put it all pen to paper. Are there other residents outside of the city that are looking for water connection, other than Mr. Mullins? Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
But you have an ongoing list of individuals, I guess those would be tapped into any master plan, because we certainly don't want to put it where people don't want it.
Well, we get, I'm sorry, we get requests to, to, you know, for water and wastewater, you know, on, on a regular basis, you know, you know, we can get two a week, we can get, you know, eight a week, Savitri sends them to us, you know, they want to know if there's water available. So she has, she should have a record of all the ones that we've gone out and looked at and said yes or no. So, there, there should be a record to that, you know, and, and I, and I know we get them all the time, and, you know, unfortunately, there's not water there, then, you know, we don't, I can't hook them up, but, you know, as of right now, some weeks, you know, we'll, we'll do three a week, you know, hookups, you know, in neighborhoods where we do have water at, that we, direction and stuff.
So, why don't we let them come up with the plan and then get back with this, Maria?
No, that's fine, but he's talking about a master plan, that's an engineering thing, I mean, we're talking about waiting for an engineer that we hired through a master plan, so, but.
I believe he's, yeah, Maria, he's, he's just talking about coming up with a plan for what he needs right now.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to know. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay, Mayor, can I add one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the, the problem I see with this, I mean, I wish all Avon Park lakes and the estates all had water, and the city had been making money, but through the years, the city hasn't had a plan to do these things. And the only people now are the, the people like John who need water, but, I mean, I'll take myself. I've been in Avon Park 26 years, I've been in 26 years, but I don't call. My neighbor asked me just the other day, because where I work, because her well, she just probably spent five grand on. So I think the majority of people want it, but there's just some that call, so I think that's not the right approach, is to go those that call. I mean, if, if we could, and I don't know if we, I don't think we need a whole master plan on the whole water system to say, you know, we do grid by grid, or whatever, how, I mean, like I talked to John, maybe his area would be the first grid. It's a, looking at as a triangle area, and I'm sure that most people, and, you know, if they can afford it, would, would hook up. And as Rick says, sometimes they run water mains down, and a lot of people say they were going to hook up, they don't hook up. So, I'm all for it, it's just, I don't think the right way to do it is once someone calls in, I want water to run there, I want water to run over there. We should have some, a, a better plan on doing that, so.
Oh, I, yeah, Mark, I totally, yeah, I, I agree with you on that, I don't think it should be willy-nilly, but anyway, the claim is that there's about eight people down that street, so, you know, he's been asking, he was told he could, and now we're reneging on him, and we're going to wait for all these other things to happen. So, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts to this, whether it's because we need more staff, or more money to hire more people, or because we don't have a master plan, you know, it won't get done for two years at this rate, we know that, because a master plan takes at least six to eight months. So, you know, in the meantime, do we just tell people, just get a list and, and wait? I mean, you know, but if you could get an estimate to see what it would be for those people down the street, I think it would be helpful, just so that we know.
Can I put my two cents in?
Yes.
Been in for 45 years, utilities, I can tell you that it's universal, private or public utilities, these types of requests come in all the time.
So do.
The, the cost of actually getting the pipe there is substantial, and when people find out what it's going to cost each individual lot to connect, nine times out of 10, they say, no, no, don't do that then. And, and in order for us to know what size pipe we need, and thus the expense, we have to have a master plan. Otherwise, you put too small a pipe in, you've really wasted the money. Now, with regard to the, the number of employees you mentioned, I, I just simply comment that I'd love to see a lot of different programs, but you, you need a backbog intervention program there, and you need somebody dedicated to that, almost universally. You need somebody with the industrial program, not just for new cord, but for all the people that are discharging and, and septic tanks, which are not being, or grease traps that are not being pumped, and things like that. So I, I, there's a lot of things in the utilities department, I would need, and I don't think they have the personnel for right now.
Okay, but just one last thing, we amortize the hookup. I mean, you can have $5 added to your water bill at next to nothing interest rates, so that they don't have that big 20, you know, $2,000 impact for the connection. So, you know, that's something we did to facilitate people to hook up. So, anyway, you know, in the end, I'm just curious, like I said, Mr. Mullins is calling me, I know, I don't know if he's called other council, I think he did, but, you know, if there are other people that call, you know, what do we tell them? We're waiting for a master plan before we even consider anything, get on the list and take it to city hall? I mean, I'm okay with that, but we just don't have any kind of rule right now.
Well, I would suggest that Rick get together with Mark, and they come up with a plan of how they would like to handle it, to structure it the best way possible with what we have. Put that out there at our next meeting, and then give us a rough plan of what they'd like to see going forward, with how many more staff they need, if any, and, and a general idea, and then we can kind of go from there.
There you go, I agree with you.
And so, one last question for Rick then, in regards to installing these meters, how many have we installed so far that's tied up the city staff doing that? And we just ordered 250 more, so how much, what's your timeframe for the installation of replacing those meters?
Um, Maria, I can't give you the exact, but I can tell you, when I came in, it was estimated there was about 1,000 dead meters, and that's why, if I'm not mistaken, we hide a second meter reader, because they're having to go out and do re-reads, visually read, because the reader, the ra, uh, radio system we currently have is down by over 1,000 meters. So when they drive by, they don't get them, so then they got to go back and get all these, these meters. And Kim asked me if I could please put in at least 30 a week, so, you know, 30, 30 a week, we're doing 30 to 40 a week currently. Pretty much a full-time job for one guy, that's, that's taking one of the guys away. And then if, if we, if we get a break, then I'll put two guys out there, then I'll take the other guys and go fix something else, or, you know. So it's, we've been sticking to the, to the 30, we haven't fell short of the 30, but we've gone, we've done as many as 40. And, and the way they're still coming in, you know, I, I'm, I'm guessing, you know, that you're good, this is probably going to go on for two years. You're looking at meters that are 15 years old, that aren't even in warranty no more. You know, you're, you're at the end of the cycle of the battery life for the meters, and the warranty. So, you know, where we're changing them out now, the new meters have a 20-year warranty versus the old meters had a, had a shorter warranty. So, you know, the meters now are a better meter, in the future, if the city decided to move forward with a fixed base, the meters that we're putting in could be converted straight to fixed base, where you wouldn't have to have anybody drive out. So we are, we are moving forward every day, you know, it's, it's, and, and we had a lot of large meters down, which if you remember Walmart, that meter hadn't, that meter had been estimated for over five years, and I think they were estimating it at 20 units, we changed that meter out, and that was when I first got here, I changed that out, and they were using 100 me, 100 units, that was a big, a lot of money that we made up for that, you know. So, we, we've definitely done some things that really brought in some money by changing these dead meters that were underestimated on what they were actually using, so, I mean, it's not just residential, commercial meters that we're changing out that are dead as well. And that's just maintenance, that's just part of utilities.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
May, may I, uh, may I speak?
Yes, who, who is this?
This is John Mullins, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, obviously, I've been listening to everything, I, I listened last week, and I, I think my situation is, is a bit different than people calling up now and requesting water, because as, as I put in the email, it hasn't just been this past year that I, that I appeared in front of council last year, I've been requesting water through the water department three years ago, and to my knowledge and understanding, my project was a go last October. I received a voicemail from Mr. Flowers, the previous city manager, that said everything had been purchased, or, or however I worded it, I worded it exactly as he said it, that the materials for this project had been purchased, and he expected shovel in the ground no later than three weeks after he called me, which was September 9th last year. So, honestly, my situation is a little different than people calling up and saying they want water, they want water. And the water line here, existing water line that they were going to tap into, is 620 feet direct line from my house. Why I went ahead and, and emailed is because obviously I went in front of council last year, and with the turnover, and, and Mr. Schrader has been wonderful, we've had great conversations, and I do look forward to having that cup of coffee with him. I understand where, where he's coming from with the, with the lack of manpower and, and staffing issues and things like that, but because my project was supposed to be done last year, it hasn't gotten done, how long now am I going to have to wait? Now I'm getting put back in line with people who were requesting water yesterday.
Right. Well, I certainly understand your frustration, you know, but with the turnover, we, we have to put everything in line with what's going on in our current situation, you know. We don't know what staff that Mr. Flowers had that was set aside to work on your project.
Well, they weren't installing meters yet, so that's a given, they, we had just put that in the budget, so the, you know, replacement of meters wasn't, wasn't started yet.
Right, so I mean, all we can really tell you at this meeting is that we're going to look into it, and we're going to give it our best shot. That's really all we can guarantee.
Yes, sir, that's all I ask, I mean, if, if, if there's a way, because of the staffing with the city, is, is, if, if there's something in the budget that would allow that to happen, I, I talk to every single one of my neighbors, I, I, you know, heard Ms. Sutherland say, nine out of 12 people that this line would run through just on my street alone, definitely say yes, they want to connect. The other three people, one is an elderly lady, the, the family thinks they're going to sell the house, so they're not sure. The house next to me is a rental, so they obviously can't speak for the owners. And the one house is a definitely no, all the way down at the end, Elgin and, and West Kingdom. Everybody else has been, every time they see us, they, you know, hey, what, what's new, what can you tell me? I'm like, I'm, I'm talking to the city, you know, I, I know it was supposed to happen, but I'm talking to the city and I'm trying to get this done. So, 75% of the people just on this street, and at the head of, of where. So seventy-five percent of the people just on this street and at the head of, of where this water line would start, they're waiting. The, the couple closest to this water line, they're, they're renting from Culligan and they know it's coming and they're waiting. That's why I, I haven't gone with Culligan because it's five or six hundred dollars, you know, out, out the door that I could put towards this water. So that's why I requested and I sent the email, if, if there's a way other than using city employees, I would, I would be forever grateful.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mullins, we appreciate it and we will get back to you just as soon as we can.
Yes, sir.
Hey Garrett, this is Stanley.
Yes, sir.
A, a, as I recall that meeting last year when Mr. Mullins was there, he was all but promised that water almost immediately. We, we need to do something to get this man water. I mean, A, he was promised and B.
A, and, um, Stanley, are you, can you hear me? Are you still talking?
He froze there.
He's frozen in time.
And, and I, let, let me just talk while he's being frozen. I agree with Stanley, but I agree with, 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 um, Garrett too. We can only do so much. And, 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 and our staff has told us he don't have the manpower to do it right now.
We're talking about going outside our manpower, Brenda.
I understand that, but then who's going to pay for all of that?
Right.
Right. Yeah, I mean, really all we, all we can do is.
Supplies were already bought. That, whoa, 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 whoa. I thought we had already purchased the material to do this. That's why I'm saying that. Is that true or not? I mean, have we done it or have we not done?
Stanley, you know, you know good and well that nobody knows that answer standing right here tonight.
Exactly.
Actually, actually, Mayor, I can answer that from what Rick told me.
Go ahead.
Only half the material was purchased last year and we watched the video, there was no promise. It was said it was being looked into. And again, I feel for John because as I told John, I don't make promises like this. And someone else did, oh, well, that's on them, but I don't promise anything I can't, um, you know, fulfill. And I'm, I'm just being honest with all these people, like I said, probably three quarters of Bayonne Park Lakes would want water. And, you know, the city should have run it years ago, but didn't for whatever reason be making money as Maria says, and all of you know that. So, um, uh, but no, that the answer is we, from what Rick told me, only half of it was purchased.
Okay.
I, I think we should allow the, the, um, staff to, to, to do the research. And, and once they do the research, then Mr. Mullins would be the top of the list and the people on his street.
I agree.
Research now, but that's the best we can do right now.
Agreed.
Let's, I'll just say that you have a mandatory connection policy. So if you do run the main and, um, at some point, they're going to be required by code enforcement to connect. It's, it's in your, your, your code and they're upheld throughout the state.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Well, as was stated, uh, staff will look into it. They will get back to us at our next meeting and hopefully we can make some headway at that meeting.
Yes.
All right. If there's nothing else on the request for potable water, we'll move on. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Item number eight, the Juneteenth event. We have Arnold Wilson. Is it Arnold Wilson or is that meant to be Arnold Davis?
Arnold Wilson. But I'm trying to see if he's on. I don't see him.
Can anybody provide a little background on this or?
I can, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Arnold Wilson, um, actually called and spoke to me last week and then, um, he, he had actually in your packet, the request form. And, um, and talking to him, he's representing the Beachfront Community Outreach. And he wanted to have a Juneteenth on, uh, July third as it says in here. And also it was a celebration to the life of, um, George Floyd. And he told me, um, uh, there was going to, that the Sheriff's Office, um, COP unit was involved in it. And we, it was Friday when we got his request back and I actually had Kim call him today. Because as you know, with the request comes, um, insurance and name in the city. And he was talking about serving foods and she covered that with him. And this morning I actually called the Sheriff's Office, talked with Major Hood and he transferred me to, um, Lieutenant Tyson, who is over the cops unit. And he said that Mr. Wilson never got with them and the Sheriff's Office is not going to be involved in this. Where Mr. Wilson expects to have five hundred people attend. And, uh, also Lieutenant Tyson, um, contacted two ladies that actually on a yearly basis, I don't know how many years they've been doing the Juneteenth for Highlands County. And that's who the cops unit with the Sheriff's Office worked with last year. However, these ladies decided because of COVID nineteen, they were not going to hold the June, um, tenth this year. And instead they were going to provide scholarships to students. And I actually called one of the, the ladies today and she verified that. And I added that was pretty nice of them providing scholarships. So that's what I, I know about it, other than his letter in here. And, um, we told him he'd need to be on tonight to, to speak about it.
Okay. So I see in here, uh, you mentioned there was roughly supposed to be five hundred in attendance. And there's a march, uh.
Yes, a victory. All on it, yes.
Okay. So on that, would we not have to close roads in order to have that? Would that be considered, you know, kind of like a parade?
Yeah, but they're only city roads, so we don't have to get permission from the county or anyone else.
I understand that, but I'm saying that they requested no roads closures, but obviously we would have to do that.
Yeah.
If you're going to have five people, five hundred people walking, uh, you know, marching down the street, you're going to have to close something.
Yeah, he said they wanted to march from the MLK complex to the Tulane Park.
Okay.
So then you do need, oh, no, you don't. I'm sorry. I was thinking of Donaldson Park. That's not too far.
And he also wants these waves for MLK and Tulane.
Okay. Well, obviously, uh, from the MOT side of it, what is needed in order to, uh, make this successful without anybody getting ran over?
Garrett, I can answer that. Uh, I'm going to need a map of where the parade route is going to be. So we can cone off all the roads. Um, we're going to have to let the sheriff's department know what is going on and what we're, we are planning to close.
Going to be involved in this? I thought he said the sheriff's department was not going to be involved in this.
I still have to notify them that we are closing roads.
Oh.
So they're aware of it.
Absolutely.
So is the city sponsoring this or is the Beachfront Community Outreach? Because don't we have to have insurance for parades and use of the park and stuff like that? Or is this going to be city sponsored?
We told him we need, we need the insurance and, um, and, uh, he's also planning on having children's activities and stuff like that too. So we told him. Yeah, he has to have the, the insurance. And, um, I mean, you know, just the fact that he's planning on five hundred people. I mean, I don't know if there's going to be five hundred people or not. It was just kind of a concern with everything.
Yeah, if they have food, they'll have people and, you know, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to make sure that if there's going to be insurance, that they meet the city's qualifications for that. But other than that, um, if they're not here.
We told him to have, that he has to have the insurance and get it to us. And then he's talking about having a stage out there. So we told him he'd have to get with code enforcement for that to get a permit for that.
Is he wanting his own stage or does he want the city's stage? There's a little octagon stage that's at public works that has to be assembled. Is that the one he wants or is he bringing something of his own?
He said he was getting one from somewhere, but I didn't even know that we had one of our own. So.
It's just a one-step, it's a one-step stage. It's about the size of two dining room tables.
Okay, okay.
I, I can't add anything to this because I called Mr. Wilson, the number that was on the, um, form and I've been calling him all weekend and I got no answer. So I, I can't add, I, I don't know, I really don't know what's going on with this.
Okay. Well, obviously, uh, you know, like Maria was saying, we'd have to have the insurance. Or we'd have to get the roads closed properly. Uh, we really need a map, so we need some cooperation from them, uh, you know, if it's going to actually happen.
Oh, I just got a text from some, somebody said there, hello? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Someone just texted me and said something but on Zoom, but no, no sound.
They're probably muted.
Yeah.
Who is it? Oh, okay, I got her. Just a minute.
You got it?
Yep, I just unmuted her. Okay.
Okay, is there someone there?
This is Rashida Moore, but I, I, no, I wasn't making a comment. That wasn't me.
Oh, Rashida, hey.
Hey, Ms. Gray.
Do you know anything about, are you part of this program that's, that they're requesting to do the, um, Juneteenth event?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. Somebody just texted me and said, but it flashed away too fast. Say they was muted. Um, they on Zoom, but they couldn't, um, they were, no sound or something like that. Okay.
So there was only one question that I had on this. I mean, it doesn't give the times. Am I, you know, did I, did I miss something?
Eleven to three. Eleven to three. Eleven to three.
Okay. So I mean, if we don't have anyone to speak on behalf of it, but yet this is next week practically, why don't? I mean, I wouldn't object to approving it, you know, pending that they get with Robert in the streets and that, you know, Mark gets with the sheriff and all of that. That way we don't have an emergency meeting as long as they provide their insurance.
I have, I have, I don't have a problem with that either, but I have another question. Someone had texted me earlier today and asked, uh, the insurance for which park? Is it for both parks, MLK and, um, Tulane Playground?
I thought it was just putting the city down as additional insured for the event, where regardless of where.
Oh, okay. And I, I couldn't answer that question because I didn't know the answer to it.
I mean, Jerry might be able to answer that better, but I thought it was just event insurance regardless of the location.
With regard to your, your, your facilities, so, um, uh, are you okay? I mean, as, as with regard to COVID nineteen, because the governor still encourages, uh, groups of less than fifty people. That's his, his latest executive order.
Right. Yes.
Hey, are, are we going to do this like we do the Martin Luther King Parade? Set out the cones and let them put up their own cones and then take them down with their gun? Or are we going to use, uh, staff members to be available to set everything up?
That's on a holiday, isn't it? The Fourth of July observant is that Friday.
The third is, is a, is an observe holiday.
Right. So no staff is working that day.
Exactly. We would have to pay them a time and a half.
Also, Mayor, can I add something?
Yes.
I, I, I wanted to go off what Jerry said. I got two concerns. One is the amount of people this COVID, um, going up. And, um, actually the EOC is now standing up five days a week because of it and the, uh.
I guess I got to come out of there.
And the, uh, Public Health. Department of Health just put out Friday about if you can't social distance, everybody should be wearing these masks and that stuff. And then my second one is I, I don't know how many people are going to actually be there, but there's five hundred. Anytime you have a event of five hundred, I think there should probably be some law enforcement presence. And I just got off the phone, I called, I, I muted myself. I just spoke to Arnold. He said he's trying to get down, but his computer crashed and he's trying to get down with his phone.
Okay.
I, I have a question for Jerry. Um, you said earlier that the, if the governor's order would, will expire on the end of June? Is that correct?
No, just that particular part about the, um, uh, the. No, just the permission regarding, uh, having meetings without a physical forum at your city hall. The fifty, the, the, the order is, that I'm referring to about the fifty people. Um, I'll have to look for the expiration date in that, but, um, uh, let's see. Because it's the, um, phase two, uh, recovery part. And let me just read you what it says about the, uh, fifty people. It says that, um, all persons in Florida are encouraged to avoid hunting dating in groups larger than fifty persons. And that was, this was put out before we had the surge. So, um, you know, I, I don't, um, I mean, I think that's a concern, but, um.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I have mixed feelings about this because, um, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm not ready to gather in big groups yet, you know, I just don't feel comfortable with it. But I, I do respect the, the Juneteenth, um, um, event and the celebration of, of Mr. Floyd. But I, I don't know. And, and like Maria said, if you have food, people are going to come out. I just don't want it to be blamed, well, you all let it happen and now this is happening. So.
Right. Perhaps a, uh, an organized drive-by would be, uh, better, you know?
Exactly.
And then you could have it longer, you know, preferably on a, a more straight road, you know, but kind of, uh, set it up that way. Almost more like a parade. That way everybody stays in their vehicles and you don't have necessarily the gathering, but you still have the ability to show and, um, you know, talk your horn and have a good time, you know?
So I, there's no expiration date on this, Brenda. The, um, the expiration date that I gave you is under section six. It says previous executive order extended, executive order twenty sixty-nine is extended until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. That executive order twenty sixty-nine is the one that allows us to have meetings without a forum. So he specifically gave a deadline for that, but the, the, um, phase two recovery will not end until we go into a phase three recovery. So that was the executive order.
Okay. Well, um, yeah, I mean, personal opinion, if you, if you look at what, uh, was going to happen with, uh, Fourth of July, they were going to have quite a bit of, uh, you know, food trucks. That was what was discussed and social gathering there and have music and all that. And, you know, all that's been canceled because of COVID, you know? So obviously we've approved a fireworks display, but all of the social aspects of it are, are now gone. So I have no doubt that people will be at their own, you know, homes and things like that, looking up at the sky. But we have to be respectful of, uh, of the pandemic that's going on. So it's just, it's a judgment call, do we want to risk it or not?
Well, does anyone know when Mr. Floyd's birthday actually is? And maybe it can be rescheduled on his actual birth date. I mean, that might be an alternative. It might be later on in the year that we can give a date that's reflective of, of him.
That would be, that's a good idea. I don't know when it is.
I don't either.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you, you can guarantee that there's a next year.
Yeah.
That's, that's always the option. And I pray to God that COVID is gone by next year. Hopefully it's gone by the end of the summer, but my goodness. One of the things you just have to wait and see.
You know, I think that Arnold's a reasonable person. I'm sure that he'll understand all of these issues that we have going on right now. And it might even give him a better chance to even plan it better because this is just next week and this is just coming to us now. You know, why don't we just postpone this until we have a better date? Because it won't work with a drive-by. The whole point is to have the bounce house with the kids and all that stuff and it, it's happened. Uh, Mr. Floyd's birthday is October the fourth, by the way, his birthday is October the fourteenth.
Okay.
So I don't know what date that is. What day of the week is that? Anyway.
A lot cooler time of year.
So will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on a Wednesday.
Very good. So I would assume there's no motions on this action tonight?
I agree. I think no motion. Let him come back. If we can postpone it, I think that's best. I don't want to cancel it. I think I'd like to just push it out further in the year.
Agreed.
So we're not going to have it approved for the third, um, maybe, you know, have potential to reschedule it for another time, right?
Correct.
Well, it, it could come back to us, right? Unless they find the vaccine between now and the second, then yeah, but that's just not going to happen.
Right.
Get there in time.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I think he'll understand.
Very good. Item number nine, Heartland Lions football team requests.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So in light of what I just heard you all speaking about, um, I, I think because I was going to actually get masks and stuff. because I was going to actually get masks and stuff, but we can't make people wear them, like we can't force them to wear them. Um, and like Brenda just said, that comes back to where the city allowed it, um, whether it's your fault or not. Um, I'd like to look at my, um, agreement, but not for right now. You know what I mean? Like, for my season, for my real season, and, and hope that everything will be back to normal by then.
Adrian, when does your season begin?
So our season actually starts in August, the end of August.
So your contract will have, I'm sorry, go ahead Brenda.
I was just gonna say ask her to give me a call, because I tried calling you this weekend too and I didn't get any answer. So give me a call.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, but sometime in July, you're gonna have to come by, come back and renew your contract, so that
Correct.
August is open, then you're good to go. Otherwise you'll be doing the same thing at the last minute.
I know, and, and I mean, I don't mind. I was doing it now, for then, like we don't have to wait till then, unless you guys have to wait till at that time. But, um, I would still like it the way that we had set it up last time, where it goes through June, so I have my playoffs included, um, for the home field.
So you're talking August of 2020 through June of 2021 with the exact same contract that we had before with a 15-day out and all that? And it just expired?
Yes ma'am. Um, so does it have to just expire? We can't do like the way I've heard you guys do your other, um, contracts, where if there's no change in anything, that it would automatically renew?
I prefer the coming back to us.
I mean, I like coming back to you guys.
Yeah, I know.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons why you're coming back is because we might have other users for the field and the whole pretense of the whole contract was to make sure that everyone had a chance to use the field if they needed it.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Um, so I'm all for that. How, I mean, whatever timeframe, maybe we could put it 30 days prior to the start of it, or?
I would say at our, our second meeting, our second meeting in July.
Okay.
Would be when we decide, and, and let's hope that over the next 30 days that, uh, things are looking better as far as COVID goes.
That's what I'll.
Yeah. That would be awesome. And Brenda, I will give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else you guys need?
That'll be it. Thank you.
All right, have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, bye.
All right, item number 10, we have the appointment of Felita Knighton to the Avon Park Housing Authority.
I make a motion, we appoint Felita Knighton to the Avon Park Housing Authority Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
We have a quorum. I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, we have a quorum.
Okay.
Thank you Felita.
And we.
All right, item number 11, budget adjustments, Finance Director.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, are you there?
Yep, I just unmuted.
Okay.
Um, you've got the, uh, basically a little recap from me. Uh, we've been going through, uh, Mark and I have been going through with the department, uh, department, uh, chairs and managers. Um, it's a good time of year to go through that, uh, budget amendment process, because we also start, uh, our planning for next year's budget. Under the purchasing, uh, policy, the finance procedures manual, um. Management, I guess the city, city manager has the authority to approve amendments under $20,000, um, with exception, uh, of transfers from the contingency fund. However, um, we've included all the amendments and I've included some justifications for most of the amendments that are right around the $10,000 range, uh, or higher. Um, and those are included in your packets. Um, there are two funds, the general fund, the solid waste fund, where we're asking for, uh, the reserves for contingency funds to be, uh, transferred, um, and that is required by the policy as well. Looking at your packet, I included a recap, but, um, the recap that I had given you, I'm not sure. The recap that you have in your packet originally did not have the, should not have had the salary infringement benefit, uh, projections in there. Excuse me. Um, those were basically still being, uh, considered as we shuffle money around, uh, amongst the funds. Uh, part of that, the reason for that is, um, last year's budget, for example, would put, I'm just going to say myself, as, uh, in the city manager's budget, but it's actually being applied to city manager water and, uh, two places in the water department, though there, it's not, uh, being charged to where the budgets were originally approved by the board, uh, by the council. So actually, we're just, uh, looking at this point in time, the, uh, from the three, the 3,000 expenses down to the 9,000 expenses. If you took the salaries out, uh, the net would be zero, um, across the board. That's where we were going at. Uh, and of course you've got just the salary, the, uh, operating expenses all the way to the other uses. Included in your packet with those justifications. So at this point in time, I will, uh, entertain any comments. Um, I did wanna mention, um, the mall beauti, excuse me. Item F on page two, um, there's, there was a $60,000, uh, application. Uh, Councilwoman Sutherland and I had some discussion about the $60,000. That's for the mall beautification project. Um, we're proposing to move some of that money out of there. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that project underway before this fiscal year or not. Um, we can always bring money back, um, if we need to, but I, I'm definitely trying to be upfront about, uh, a lot of these changes. And so that's, uh, that's one out there, um, at the moment that, um, you have to be aware of, as well as, uh, that reserve transfer, um, uh, item H. And then, uh, there was also, uh, talk about the water meters in that. Four, seven, item J. We are reducing that budget. Um, the water meters are kind of a, that's kind of a hard one to estimate. Um, but even with the approval, which should take us through the end of this year, um, reducing that budget, uh, by under $20,000 should, uh, still have enough, uh, in that line item, even for those, uh, new water meters. In that particular fund, you can see that, uh, there is no reserve transfer from the contingency fund, so. Um, at this point in time, I think I kinda covered a couple of the high points there. Um, and, and again, just, um, I guess, trying to be transparent. Um, we, we very well could see some transfer back out of those reserves for contingencies, uh, for the end of the year. Uh, so, and, and there is some money in those accounts, uh, being projected for the 2021 budget, uh, which has, of course, hasn't been presented yet, so. All right, I'm ready now, so I'm out of breath, so.
Okay, do we have questions for Dan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So on your reserve for contingency, the 194 that's available, is that all of our contingency, everything?
That's what, uh, the budget shows for this year. Um, and again, that amount is, uh, a similar amount is being rolled into next year's budget. But I, I do believe there, uh, there is a possibility that some of that might be restored before the end of the year.
So remember we had talked about that insurance ticket that was for the old police building? Were you able to find out where that money went and if it got spent?
Um, not specifically. I did, um, talk with the auditors about, uh, and again, it, there's some, uh, I'll call it semantics for lack of a better term, between restricting and reserving fund balance. Um, it's basically right now, as far as I can tell, if it hasn't been spent, it's, it's in unreserved, uh, fund, fund reserves or fund equity.
So it's, okay, but it has an account, it's somewhere, right? It, it's not in the contingency. It didn't get plugged into the.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I spoke with Mark briefly about this, uh, about maybe restricting part of that reserve, uh, for, I don't know, about $275,000, because I think the total was 281 or something, and
Yeah.
Um, I've gotta believe that some of that money, you know, somewhere along the line, uh, had to have been used, um, I think. And so I think 275 would be, um, not that I'm trying to negotiate a number today, but, uh, that just feels to me like that could be, you know, a fair number to restrict. And then we can, uh, as we use that money, we can actually, uh, pull that restriction off.
Okay, so, and in regards to the rest of this thing, you answered my question, thank you, on that specific thing. Um, on, for example, on the fourth chunk on page, it's not page, but it's the first budget adjustment worksheet. Um, the $40,000 in professional services, um, I had spoken to you before and you had said that those dollars had been encumbered, so they reflected as though they were spent, but they had only been encumbered and they hadn't been spent yet. Um, further down in your budget, you put down that some of these things have been spent and that you're giving us to the to-date amounts. So is on the city attorney professional services, is that to date or is that encumbered? Um, is this additional 40 on top of the original budget or what?
Let's just try to let up very quickly here, uh. Oops, that's different. Um, I, I think the, the bulk of that is encumbered, um, and I'm still, here we go.
So the amount to increase, though, that's on top of what's already been encumbered or is it 40,000?
No, so your date spent, um, as of this very moment, um, is about $70,000 and some change. Um, the budget is 60,000, and so, you know, I, we're planning to need, we're proposing to increase it to the 100,000. Um, it's $30,000 through the end of the year, will be close, um, but I think it will, um, and then with what we have encumbered, we can, uh, bring that down, um, a little bit more. So I think we'll be all right, um, with that budget amendment of $40,000.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Dan?
I have several more, um, the rest of this, so bear with me. My battery's running low, so I'll speak fast. The community daycare.
I'll talk to that.
The community daycare center, and I know that this is a small amount of dollars, it's only $1,500. Um, I thought we still gave them $1,500 a year. Is that no longer the issue?
I don't believe, that's in, uh, record, oh, there it is, yep, uh, in other government services. Um, we have, there's been nothing spent in that account and, uh, there has, uh, I, as I recall, there hasn't been anything spent in that account for, uh, a couple, couple audit cycles.
Okay.
Jack, but, uh, it's been there.
Okay, next.
All right, further on down, um, let me see here. On the fire control, fire other services, section D, you said that the consultant, um, we ended up spending more with him and that we spent more, therefore we gotta adjust that budget. I thought he'd already left, so the question is, is the increase in the lieutenant's pay gonna be at the same level as what we were paying the consultants? Is that why you're needing more funding into that department, into that line item?
Well, that line item would come out of salaries then. Um, and as we, um, basically, again, I, we do have some amount encumbered in there, and I'm gonna bring that up very quickly, but there are other costs that go into there. So we're just kind of, uh, estimating through the end of the year without that consultant, uh, I forget his name now, uh.
But he's no longer with us, right? The consultant has left.
That is correct.
Okay, I don't need the details. I, I'm with you on that, okay. Then on the next one, there's another contractual services. Uh, you'd said that that 40,000 that you were taking out of the 60,000 for the mall, and you're plugging that into utility services for water, ballpark maintenance, the Durham Martin, operating supplies, and then uniforms. Um, you know, uniforms was talked quite a bit during our budget and it just seems, were, were we woefully underfunded with uniforms? I mean, I know it's not a big amount, but still, it just seems as though we go through a lot of uniforms.
I don't, um, I'm not 100% sure that uniforms were, um. All uniforms were being budgeted. I'll say that.
Okay.
Includes, uh, safety shoes. In some cases, uh, there's some contractual requirements, um, and that is, uh, basically, um, the HR director and I, I've got a list of, uh, for next year's budget yet, and putting that into, uh, making sure that in a reasonable amount for uniforms and shoes, uh, where, where we're required to provide them, uh, is provided for in the budgets.
So question, in regards, for example, to the ladies that work downstairs in utility billing, are those uniforms? Is that required?
Mark, you wanna answer that one? That's the same question we're having right now, actually, uh.
Yes, this coming fiscal year, in fact, I think there's money in there now, yes, the ones that sit at the front are gonna wear an Avon Park shirt. Yes.
Okay, so everyone's gonna have a uniform downstairs?
So, yeah, and I think some of our discussion is, uh, is it just tops or i- is it a full uniform? Uh, we're, I think we're leaning more toward the polos, um, be basically their uniform. Um, but again, there's some discussion there still.
So, you know, this is beyond this question here, but what about individuals that cannot wear a uniform based off of their religious beliefs? Are they gonna get a credit so that they can go out and buy their own clothes? I mean, that's just a question for you guys. I guess you'll have to talk to the labor attorney on that one. So the other question I had was, um, getting down to the section here on the water for the police department building, which is section, uh, part C?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a contract with them, um, and there was a $75,000 contingency amount that was attached to that contract. And so for some reason in the past, they just get the 75,000 to spend it as they see fit. I always thought that that contingency was for excess expenses on top of their current contract. So are you telling us now that we're gonna have to revamp their contract to include these increases? Because I didn't believe that we're gonna be paying for every little increase that they have when they have a contract already and that 75 should have been used for this, so is that a consideration?
Um, I was told that we were to provide, I'm turning to find that page again, I got it on my screen anyway. That, um, the, the, they're, they've got that building, um, and they give us a dollar or something a year to use the building in that we're providing the utilities, uh, for them to basically inhabit the building or, or to use the building. And that includes water, um, for whatever reason, uh, that was a zero amount. As you can see, the other, uh, there's also communication services and, and, uh, the building's repair and maintenance. And so that's why there was money put in there, because, uh, I asked the same question. If we, you know, if, if we don't have a police force, what, you know, is it just water running, you know, for whatever reason? And that, that's what I was told, is that we're still providing the utilities to that building, uh, for their use.
So can you find out whether or not the $75,000 contingency that they used to get separately and they would get whatever funding they needed as they went through the year? And like I said, I think now we're just giving them the amount of money, they spend it as they see fit. Can you find out whether or not that 75 was intended for the utility bills? Because in my opinion, they should be. Um, those are extra expenses that our taxpayers are paying for, and now we're gonna be paying more. So it should come out of that 75,000 contingency. That's just me, but I'd like to see if you could find out where it came out from before. But I'm not ready to approve this budget amendment without knowing that information.
Sure. Well, this is the, this is the first reading.
Yeah, just thank for approval.
Okay, well, still, I might be at the next meeting, so I'm just saying.
Okay.
Okay, the other one was, um, billing and repair maintenance, uh, increase the parks, it was G. A $75,000 decrease, um, was that for the building over at Public Works?
That's an increase. Is, is, is that?
But where's that, where's that money coming, where's that, where's the money coming from for that increase?
That was, um. That was, um, um, Robert helped me. Uh, I think, what was it? The, uh, gym floor that was replaced and, uh, a lot of that money came from, uh, insurance proceeds, um, either late last year or early this year.
So the insurance paid eighty thousand, the insurance paid eighty thousand dollars. So I mean, it's paid for. So, but you're wanting another seventy-five to cover that eighty thousand?
No, 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 it's, um, the, 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 the reality is ten thousand dollars was budgeted. We actually spent almost eighty-five thousand. If we don't increase the budget, then that department, uh, runs the risk of running over budget at which point then we get cited. So this, that's really a formality budget as much as anything.
But it's not gonna be money that's gonna be spent?
It has been spent.
Okay, it has been spent. It's not going to be spent. This is something that you're adjusting from the past from the insurance payment.
Correct.
Okay.
This happened, uh, November or something. I don't know.
Right, okay. Okay. Which brings me back to the seventy-five thousand that was allocated. I don't see it in here and it may be in the next batch. And, you know, a lot of it is bouncing all over the place. But there was seventy-five thousand that was budgeted to rehab one of the buildings over at Public Works that when it was budgeted, I questioned, do we really need that much? And then we come to find out that they did, they weren't gonna rehab it after all. So there's seventy-five thousand sitting in building maintenance at Public Works for that little structure that sits to the east of Public Works building. And I'm just wondering, you know, is that money still sitting there? And is it gonna be used for something else? You, you don't have to answer, but I just hope you take notes because that's one that, you know, when we go to next year's budget, that's not gonna be something that we're gonna need to rebudget, just like the sixty thousand for the mall. You know, what are we gonna do with that for next year? Because you've already allocated it for something this year. That wasn't meant to be a recurring expense from year to year.
Correct.
Okay, and then moving on, contractual services, uh, you have a decrease. I'm just curious on account four oh one ending in thirty-four hundred on the water utility. Um, it went from fifty to forty. I mean, I'm glad there's a decrease there, but what, was that just over budgeted?
I think that's the case.
And accounting and auditing, I mean, I'm all good. I'm not gonna, you know, go into detail. I'll let you do that on your, and I trust your judgment there. Um, the other one, though, on the sludge hauling, um, how is it that that went up so high? Um, there was a, a computation done by previous management that told us that we would be saving, um, tens of thousands of dollars this year by not hauling our sludge. And now we see a fifty thousand dollar increase.
I think, is that, uh, Rick, is that you or is that Robert? Um, we had a large, uh, let me see, like a fifty.
Can I step in for a minute? Can I step in for a minute?
Yes.
They, they, they went from forty-five, don't quote me exactly, but they went from forty-five to sixty-five dollars a ton.
Right.
So they, they really jacked us up a lot.
That was the county, though.
Hauling versus them hauling. I wasn't here during that time.
Yeah, but here's the thing.
That's something I'd like to go back and research.
Okay, we were told that the increase that we would be paying the county was still gonna be cheaper than us hauling it all the way to Okeechobee.
Right.
Yeah, I believe. On that, uh, the sludge that they're talking about is from the wastewater. That is sludge is being hauled to Polk County landfill from, from the wastewater plant, not garbage taken to.
There you go. I think that's what it was, yeah.
How did that get undershot so much, though? I don't understand that. You're saying it went up fifteen dollars per ton?
Maria, I don't believe we have a contract or set price with them. I believe we've just been using them. I don't know, you know, I've had so much within a year given to me, you know, with Ronnie leaving it. I can't check into every little crack and crevice. But I, you know, they came in and they stuck it to us and I called, uh, Gator and everything else and looked at us hauling and it was still cheaper using the company that we're currently using right now to haul.
Well, I think it would be helpful. I mean, we're talking about not having enough people to do work. If we could find something that's cheaper, I mean, if it is available, that fifty thousand right there would cover, you know, a good staff person to help.
I understand. I called US Water, US Filter. I've called several people out there and nobody's beat their price.
Okay.
That was, uh, almost a, a forty percent increase, I believe. And, uh, looking back at, uh, the last three or four years, I think maybe I mentioned in my notes, but last year was the first year this account hit the hundred thousand dollar mark. And here it is June and we're already over a hundred thousand dollars.
Do we have more quantities? Does the quantity increase as well other than the price? Or, you know, the volume, I guess, is what I'm asking, the volume of sludge? Okay.
Rick, um, uh, how many new haulers do you have coming in dumping sludge at the wastewater plant?
I don't know. I'd have to research that. But I mean, the, the thing that we didn't do is, you know, we took in an increase in, and, and hauling the sludge off, but we never increased that to the haulers that are dropping their, their, their sludge to us. So, you know, the thing is, you go back and look at, you know, that six cents or seven cents that, you know, you know, that we're charging them a gallon and look at maybe saying, you know, hey, look, you know, we, you know, we're, we're losing money. Well, we need to increase that.
Yeah. I agree. That's something that we should, we should look at because if our price is going up, we need to increase what we're charging other people as well.
Right.
I agree.
And I, I thought the only reason we took outside sludge is because we were gonna make money off of it, not lose money.
Exactly.
So somebody needs to be on top of that.
All right, so that's something to consider in the next budget. Hopefully we'll have some info by then. Does that require engineering? I don't know. Anybody to do the computations and stuff? Okay, then the next one was, um, there's talks here, we increased the maintenance by ten thousand dollars for vehi- vehicle repair. I thought we bought a bunch of vehicles. We bought a diesel truck, we bought trucks and all this other stuff. And we're still having all of these expenses and maintenance. Is that, what's that for?
Um, I've gotta know what, where we're talking.
I'm sorry, uh, four oh one ending in forty-six twenty.
Don't look past halfway. Page four.
Still there? Uh, yep, I got it. Let's see, I don't have a comment on that one, I guess, so, uh, I think that's just, uh, normal maintenance is all I'm gonna attribute it to at the moment without looking into it a little bit more, but, uh.
Okay, and then right below it, um, the section that has the thirty thousand, was that just an audit adjustment? So that money's been spent? You're just adjusting it at this point?
That, yes, that's just not, and I don't know where that, you know, that's kind of a, 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 I don't wanna call it a guess number, but, um, it's basically adjusting to ending inventory.
Okay.
But, but next year it'll be a little lower because, uh, we should have more inventory unless we're using everything plus, so.
Okay, then you had a seventy-five thousand dollar to decrease. I'm gonna go up just two, I'm sorry, from that thirty thousand, just go down about four. And it has the, um, other contractual services, um, dropping at seventy-five thousand dollars. What was the purpose? Do you, I don't know what we had budgeted and what it was for, that likely will come back next year and then we're gonna have to rebudget this next year. So I'm just wondering, is this seventy-five reflective of this year based off of previous years? And next year it's gonna be low again and we won't have to budget two hundred and fifty thousand for whatever that is? We can only budget one seventy-five?
Thirty, thirty-four.
Yeah, thirty-four hundred.
Yeah, I, go on, uh.
I just wonder, when you have such a huge dramatic decrease in something, was it because we didn't do a project and we're just using that money now and it's gonna come back next year as a, as a, you know?
I think that's part of it. I mean, um, you know, I'm looking and, you know, Kimley Horn's in there, twenty foot, twenty-seven thousand and, you know, five hundred dollars we spent. Uh, uh, Florida Department of Corrections is in there. Um, we have, I don't know how much more we're gonna use them before the end of the year with the whole COVID thing.
Okay.
I think, uh, a lot of this, from what I've been looking at as I've been preparing next year's budget, a lot of it seems to be, um, basically rollover where, okay, we got this number and we're gonna roll that same number over again.
Right, okay.
Then we make these adjustments and, uh, I'm just, a lot of these adjustments are coming out, um, because I'm trying to keep from, uh, hitting those, that contingency fund if I can. And so, um, you know, in this particular case, it looks like this other contractual services is probably a little over budgeted, but again, I don't know if we're, uh, in talking with, uh, I think it's Rick in this case, um, where, you know, Kimley Horn might hit us with a, you know, another bill somewhere, uh, quickly. We don't have anything encumbered for them, so, um, you know, I'm not anticipating anything, but, uh, there's still enough room there, I believe, uh, to cover, um, any unforeseen, uh, between now and September thirtieth. Any un- expenses.
And I only have a couple more.
Okay.
Um, on the fifty-two fifty-one, uh, starting four oh one, fifty-two fifty-one, last four digits. Um, you, I know that we have scheduled, and this goes back to Rick. Um, you know, we had three hundred and fifty thousand set up in that current, in the current budget for all these water meters changes. So now we're dropping that. We're not gonna be installing as many as we thought we would, right? Is that what I'm reading into this? Or did the price go down of meters?
You're asking me? I didn't change that price. I know, I know when Ronnie was here, it was a million and then I think, I think it got dropped to five hundred thousand. And I don't know, that's what we've used this year as far as changing meters and stuff like that out. I'm not sure, Maria, I can't.
Okay, well, it was three fifty and according to the current budget and now it's decreased by one hundred and twenty thousand. So I mean, I know that you're, you're, you just ordered two hundred and fifty thousand more. I'm guessing that that's where this money's coming from, right?
Two hundred fifty.
Right?
Two hundred fifty meters, not two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, correct, the meters. And the meters, right, so that's coming out of that particular line item. Am I correct?
I believe so. Dan, am I correct?
So.
And that was what?
And that's gonna be an ongoing.
In two thousand.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
In two thousand eighteen, we spent two hundred seventy thousand out of this account. In two thousand nineteen, we spent ninety thousand dollars. And then we rolled three hundred fifty into this current year. Three fifty is probably a little bit high. We pull this money out, down, um, down, uh, I don't even, uh, down to two hundred thirty thousand. How much was the purchase order for, Robert?
Forty-eight thousand, five hundred.
So if we add that, call it fifty grand, to what we've spent year to date, that brings us up to about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So we still have forty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand dollars available for other things beyond meters, which I, I doubt we're gonna hit. But, uh, again, I'm, I'm not tr- I'm not attempting to leave these budgets, uh, uh, down, you know, down to the bone either. Um, I'm leaving a little bit, uh, in a lot of these accounts again until, till we get a better feel for, you know, where some of the, you know, where we're over budgeted or where we got more than we really need. So I think there's still, uh, enough in that particular account to cover anything that might come up.
Okay.
I would, I would have to sit down and figure out how many we're putting in a month and then get with Savitri to figure out how many that we currently have that are not reading. And to be able to try to budget on an estimate of how many fell this year, last year, to try to figure out how many meters, you know, we're putting in along with, you know, new customers and everything else. Um, to try to figure out what that actual budget would be for the meters of the next year.
Yeah.
Um, you know, prior to me, nobody was installing meters, so the meters were just dying and nobody was, nobody was, nobody was replacing them.
We get that.
No, and I understand that. And I, I, I know that it's gonna be an ongoing thing that's gonna be continuous, but if we're gonna go at the same rate that we're going right now, then you're never gonna have time to do anything else as long as you're installing these meters, which is fine for installing meters. But then if you don't have, we can't install water lines, then we have a problem, right?
Right, but we'll.
That's what I was trying to.
We'll follow up on that on a separate subject, but yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Okay, well, anyway, you kinda get the picture. All right, and then last, um, there was a expenditure, I'm trying to look at here on section, oh, I just discussed that one. All right, um, section D, sorry to go back up again because that was on the, on the last page. Um, there was a electricity um, shortfall of forty thousand dollars, it appears, so we're increasing that by forty thousand. Is that based off of future use or current use?
Um, currently, we've spent, uh, sixty-five thousand out of that account. And, uh, so this is based on projected use through the end of the year. Um, some of it is looking at an average per month. For whatever reason, I'm, again, uh, looking at, uh, trouble, that's actually through a six-month projection. They're spending about ten thousand dollars a month in electricity.
So Daniel, do you think, where are any of these line items, uh, to where you're making expenditures? Are there combinations of different department funding or other line items that, let's just say, for that utility, for that, for the sewer plant? Is it all paid out of one line item or was it being paid out of several line items?
No, it's, it's being paid out of several line items and I believe, um, each, well, there are several, you know, I'm just using electricity, several meters that were being billed off of and based on that meter reading, that's the account that gets charged.
Okay. But they're not necessarily, so, so we have, let's just say, the meters there, even there might, let's just say there's five meters there. Um, where, this is one meter that we're paying for, I'm just guessing here. And then there might be three or four other meters coming out of a different account, even though it's at the same plant.
That, that is a very good, uh, it's a possibility. I don't know if it's three or four. It might be two meters and maybe one's being charged to, for example, here at City Hall, um, some of it may be allocated to utility billings, which is water and some of it to the city manager, which, which is us and, uh, some maybe to finance.
So that being the case, if, if that's the case, then that means that those other billings will come in at a decrease because you just increased this one.
Um, not necessarily because, uh, this one just may have been under budgeted to begin with.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. All right, I'm done. Oh, wait, wait, one last one. Sorry, sorry, sorry. On section D, there was an increase in a disposal plant electricity. There was, I'm sorry, there, is Nucor gonna be factored into any additional electricity or anything? That's not gonna be an issue, is it, with more processing? And I don't know who answers that question. Is there gonna be an increase in, because we're increasing the capacity use? Is that gonna increase the electrical output?
That's one we'll have to look at.
So if that does, then maybe that number, I don't know, does it have to be higher? Okay, I'm done.
Anything else on the budget adjustments?
Nope.
Budget amendments. I heard mentioned that there was gonna be two readings. Is this correct?
There, we're planning on bringing this back, uh, to, at the next meeting. Um, unless we don't have, I'll say unless we don't have all the answers, uh, we might hold off for two more meetings. We will have a second reading.
Okay, so we're gonna be approving the first reading then. Okay, do we have a motion for the budget adjustments, first reading?
I make a motion that we approve the budget adjustments on its first reading.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing then we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion unanimous?
Thank you. Out of number twelve, discussion of brickle building air quality testing. Mark, that's you.
That's me. I had planned on just bringing this up on, uh, the manager's report, but Friday, last Friday, mid-morning, I got some information that, um, I didn't know about, so I wanted to bring it up here. So I've, I've written something up, so I, I hopefully don't forget something here, but early last week, I'd asked Robert to get ahold of some environmental companies, um, about the brickle building and the supposed mold in there. And he called and spoke to two of them. Both, um, state certified. One of them actually a, a lab. Him and I had talked to the owner on another issue. And, uh, they both told him, um, obviously at different times, pretty much the same thing. They said that, um, doing an air quality testing at the brickle building would, wouldn't be feasible to do because it doesn't have air conditioning. They said a building with no air conditioning will, will test positive du- uh, for mold due to the fact the building is not maintained in a regular temperature. And that temperatures fluctuate causing humidity, thus causing mold to grow. And any, uh, mold remediation will only last a month or two without air conditioning. And thus the mold will be back again. Um, to properly treat mold, you had, would have to have an air conditioning system installed or they even talked about fans and windows open and, and that. And as, as Robert, um, said, the, the building has no electricity. And as, as Robert said, the, the building has no electricity, has no meter, doesn't even have a serviceable panel. The one, though, they'll, they'll provide a quote, and one said they come out and do a visual inspection for mold if we want and use our infrared to look for any wet spots or anything, but with a new roof, I don't imagine there's any wet spots in that. And then I had, about Wednesday, Robert told me there was also termites in the building, which is the first I'd heard of it, and he said that probably been there at least two years that he knows of it. So I asked him to get ahold of a pest control company to go in there and see what we have. So Robert got a pest control company to go in there, and after doing an inspecting, inspection with him, they said you have two types of termites in there, the subterranean and the dry wood. And that the same pest control owner actually did a test in there or went in and looked for termites five or six years ago, I'm assuming before the city had it. And he said there was termites in there at that time, and he told them it needed to be tenned.
I remember that.
So just before, about an hour before the meeting, Robert had got a letter from the pest control company about fumigation of the building, and it said it would have to be tenned for three days. And that the adjoining properties would have to be in their term locked out or tagged out, meaning that the owners or occupants of the adjoining buildings wouldn't be able to use it when it, when they were fumigating. And they'd also have to shut down Lake Avenue for two or three hours. So that's what I've learned, and Robert and I've learned in the last week about the, the building.
Okay, well, having said that, obviously, it looks like we're waiting on some quotes. But I mean, my personal opinion would be to not worry about having it one hundred percent clean, to go ahead and market it as is.
I agree with that.
I do.
Yeah. Okay, is anyone opposed to that? Okay. As far as marketing it, I know that we've had some previous conversations about this in the past, and for the life of me, I can't remember the, the conclusion of them. But for marketing that building, do we have to go to some type of an auction-type situation, or what are our options?
Yeah. You would view auction-style bid, bid-style thing, not, not auction. I mean, you could do an auction, but you'd have to write that into your procurement policy. Right now, you're doing bids.
Okay. So is anyone opposed to going ahead and setting up a bid process for this? Or Jerry, do you have some pointers for us as the best way to go about that?
I think the best thing for me to do would be to research what you, exactly you need to do and what the possibilities are, and send you a memo on it so you can make a decision.
Perfect. Is anyone opposed to that action?
No.
Okay. Hearing no objections, Jerry, you have your directive. Let's see if we can't get something going at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else on the brickle building discussion?
Well, since we're talking about the brickle building, we were, and he found out about the mold and all that. Also, we were gonna find out about the feasibility of maybe a grant for some historic things on the Wild Building. Has any of that been done?
The Wild Building?
Right, a, a, and the brickle building, and I mean, of course, now, the brickle building has come up with a curve with all this other stuff. But Ms. Gray made that suggestion over a month ago that we do that. What, what's been done on that?
Ms. Sutherland, didn't you have some discussion on that? Didn't you have some insight into the, how the grant process works on the historical part? Maria, you there?
I think her battery died. She may, her, uh, life may have died, yeah.
Oh, she's, she's muted, Maria. Still muted. There you go. Can't hardly hear you.
Ah, there you are.
You're back.
All right, sorry about that, I'm on my, my daughter's computer now.
Okay, Maria, the question was asked about the historical grants for the brickle building and the Wild Building. I recall you mentioning something about that at our last meeting, possibly the one before. Do you know the process of that?
Um, they're available, I know that those grants, they're highly competitive. They go through the Department of State under the Division of Cultural Affairs, I believe it is. Typically, you have to apply for the design funding first, and then you get in line, and then they give you money later on for the actual rehab. That's the last, I remember them working those types of grants. And there typically isn't a lot of money for the state to do that. It's, like I said, very competitive. I've never written one of those. I have for museums, but not for buildings. So it would just recall, require someone calling at the, the Division of Cultural Affairs Historic Resources is really what it is. And just talking to someone up there and finding out what the process is, that's really all it takes. And I know that there are applications actually online under that heading of the Division, or the Department of State, Division of Cultural Resources or Historical Resources, something like that. And you just kind of go through these steps, you know, but I think you just have to call somebody to get the confirmation. I'm not very optimistic about those. They're really hard to come by, and you know, we don't have it marked as a historic site. It's a contributing item to the historical area of the city because these buildings have been modified so many times that they have a number, but they're not really historic per se because they've been modified so much.
Right. So we could have a staff member look up that and see what is available?
Yeah, just call the, the Division or the Department of State Division of Cultural Resources. And there's a, there's a program in there for historic buildings, historic resources, and just talk to somebody about it. That building, like I said, has a number, they'll be able to pull it up for you. Every building inside the city of Avon Park prior to nineteen eighty-nine, that was at least fifty years old, has a number. That includes your house up on the hill, Garrett, and any structure that's that old. So everyone has a number, but it doesn't necessarily make them historic, they're just contributing items to the historic area. So that might be a problem, it might be a hurdle.
And if, if they have any questions, obviously, you'd be willing to take a phone call from?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are we talking about the Wild Building, the one we have a bid out for demolition to look for this grant?
I think the point was to take a look at the website and see if there's any grant available just to, for the information of the council.
Okay.
I'm assuming it should be a fairly straightforward process to see what's, what's actually available. And then the next question would be, how long would it take? And the next question would be, do we want to go that route? So.
I thought we had, Garrett, let me ask a question. I thought we had decided we was gonna demolish that building. Was that, my question was, at the last meeting, was it a historical building? And could we do that? That was my question.
And I believe the, the answer to that question is, yes, it has a historic number, but it doesn't contribute to the historical part of that city. So the likelihood of them giving us something is probably slim.
Okay, so then our next step, once we find that, they're not gonna give us anything, that is to go ahead and tear it down, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Hey Garrett, may I say something?
Yes, sir.
We did a walkthrough on the Wildy Building, and I believe Carl Coles with us when we walked through that building.
Right.
There is some terrible stress cracks in the front of that building. And if you stand on the east corner of building and look west, you'll see the front of that building is bowing out real bad, and that's where all the cracks are at. I don't know if it's even feasible to repair that building without tearing the whole front of it off and rebuilding it. That would take all the historical value out of that building.
I agree with you, and I'm very familiar with what Carl had also said about the building. The question was just asked of what is available, and that's all we're seeking to do is answer that question.
Okay.
I do have one comment on that building, though. It used to not have that tile out in front, and that tile was just plastered up there to camouflage without having to restucco that building or something. But behind that tile, which is from the nineties, I guess, or from the early two thousands, there's actually the real building. So is the bulging caused by the shabby placement of that tile? Or is it the actual building that has the structural fault?
The building has structural fault. If you walk inside and go upstairs, you'll see that whole section where the tile fell, and we put up the plywood to cover up the hole. That area there has some terrible cracks that go almost all the way through.
Oh, still a safety hazard.
Put it down soon, that building's gonna crash.
Right. Agreed, okay, anything else on the brickle building?
No.
Seeing none, item number thirteen, Fourth of July fireworks, Councilman Bernard, you had a question?
Yes, not really, well, not really a question, but a comment. I've been asked for over a month now about the fireworks display. And the only answer I had for anybody, whether it was in person or online, was that we gave money to have the firework display. And as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, that means that we're going to do that. And beyond that, then the newspaper put it in last week saying that Avon Park is gonna have the fireworks display. So I just wanted to bring it up that we are all in agreement that we're going to have it and that hopefully still go under Dawson Park rules of, you know, having people safely separated, mask if they just so desired and so on and so forth, even though it's outside. But I think the people want to know from the city council, are we definitely moving forward with the fireworks display? And I think that the answer is yes, but I want confirmation from everybody else if possible.
Uh, in my opinion.
We did say, yes, we were gonna do that, but we're not gonna have any, any of the other events that was there, is that correct?
Right, right.
Yeah. Just the fireworks.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so just the fireworks. So originally, I know there was a push, I think it was from the Chamber of Commerce, possibly another group, that they were gonna have, you know, food trucks, and there was gonna be music and entertainment and all of that. Obviously, none of that's gonna happen, so it's just gonna be a fireworks display. Anyone who shows up in attendance obviously will be encouraged to socially distance, wear a mask if you can, stay in your car if possible, you know, just be safe, it's common sense. And we're not gonna have a, a, a big block party, I'll put it that way.
No.
Hey Garrett, since, since this has been brought up, I have, I had Ashley to do a road closure permit like we usually do.
Right.
Which goes from Verona up to the top of the hill by A Miracle and around Purple. Are we still gonna do those road closures? Since we're not having all the events.
Well, if you don't, then whenever the display starts, you're probably gonna have a whole bunch of people driving their car down and looking out the window, and it's probably not a good idea.
And that's a safety item.
So.
The road closures then.
Yeah, I mean, I think people are pretty used to it, it's something that happens every year in the same spot, you know? So I think people know the drill by now, and sticking with what we know is probably the best thing at this point.
All right, thank you.
Are we gonna have the sheriffs there blocking it off too with cars?
Everything as usual.
Okay.
Except for the events.
Correct.
Okay, I will be leaving after the show tomorrow.
Yeah, in terms of MOT and policing, everything will be as usual.
But did you say we were gonna close off a portion of Maine?
Yes, uh, from, from Verona all the way up to A Miracle, like we usually do.
So you need a, didn't we already approve the permit for that with the actual fireworks when Mr. Turner came up to the council?
I believe we did, but it's worth looking into.
That permit has to go through FDOT, and that's what we're in the process of right now.
So you do have the permit already then, and I mean, you got.
The permit yet, we are in.
No, I mean, I mean, you got from the council last time, we did make the motion to approve it, so you've got that paperwork.
Yes, we, we got it.
Okay.
We got a copy of the minutes, that's all we need, just a copy of the minutes to turn in FDOT, and we're, we're it's approved, and we've got all that.
Great.
Very good. All right, item number fourteen, virtual meetings discussion, Councilmember Bernard.
Yeah, this was already talked about earlier by Attorney Jerry Gure. But I was on a conference call with the Four League of Cities this past week. We brought up that same item, who basically told us that, same thing that Jerry said, that the, as of June thirtieth, the permit for having virtual meetings for the cities would expire. And that they, basically, their opinion is that we need to make, Four League of Cities said that we need to make plans to go back to have live meetings starting next month at the chambers. So that's where I'm going with it. You know, whether we have to have virtual for some people who don't feel like they're comfortable, or as long as we got a quorum if they have health reasons, then that's fine too. But I think, and Jerry, you can verify, I think you already said this, but pretty much, we don't have a choice right now unless the governor changes another mandate because right now in that time.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good, and obviously, we will, as Councilmember Bernard was saying, we will make the online available to anyone who cannot attend. They can attend virtually, but we do have to have a live quorum in order to have a meeting. Very good, all right, moving on to item number fifteen, discussion of the CARES Act grant. Myself and Ms. Sutherland was there at the CARES Act hearing that the Highlands County had. They appointed a board to go over some of the rules, and the important thing to remember is that the rules seem to be changing daily. They're gonna have two more meetings about this before they pitch something to the, the Board of County Commissioners. So next Wednesday, and actually, excuse me, this Wednesday and next Wednesday, they will have additional meetings at the boardroom at the county office. At this point, they're very open to asking to what, what do we actually need? So they were appointed up to eighteen million dollars. In this first round, they were given twenty-five percent of that, which is roughly four point six million dollars to distribute throughout the county. They have to spend this money by September the thirtieth, and it can be spent in quite a few different ways. A lot of the ways are similar to like EIDL grants. They can pretty much make up whatever rules they want as to how they determine it. But the main thing is that the businesses that qualify and the individuals that qualify would have to show some type of a loss. That's what they're trying to figure out, is how they're gonna be able to verify that at this point. So the only reason that I was really bringing it here tonight was more or less just to make the rest of the council aware that it is out there, hopefully get it out into the public. There is a young lady that is the point person on that board, and Maria, do you happen to have her name? I couldn't find it in my notes.
Um, it starts with an S. I can email you tomorrow, she's the Legislative Affairs Corps, Sidney Armstrong is her name.
Sidney Armstrong, yes. So if you, if you have any questions for them to ask the state as to what would qualify and what would not qualify, she is the one to send those questions to. I've asked the city manager to go to the other two meetings, just to represent the city there. There's gonna be money available for any expenditures that the city has had that relates to COVID in particular, whether that be through cleaning or more staff time and things like that. So there's probably gonna be a pretty good amount of money coming to the city and to the citizens of the city, so it's a very good deal. At this point, it's looking like the county is gonna be handling all the actual applications, which would be a big load off of the city. But as those details come out, we'll continue to make it as publicly available as possible.
Garrett, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it, would this be individuals, like if I lost my job?
Yeah, so, yeah, so they, they would have the ability to do that. It could be done as a unemployment-type situation. It could be done as just a straight grant to businesses or individuals. They even said that there's a potential to be able to help with mortgage payments and utility payments.
And rent.
And rent, yes. So there's an issue, leases for businesses. The other thing that was brought up was that the Chamber of Commerce is a five oh one C six, which was not previously covered by the CARES Act before. So they would have the ability to request money as well. It's not yet seen how exactly they can do that or what the caps are gonna be. But like I said, any ideas that you have, any questions that you have, please forward them to the young lady that we discussed, and they'll try to get you some answers.
So do you have an email?
One at a time.
Go ahead, Maria.
Mine's gonna be long, go ahead.
Okay, well, do, do you have an email, a telephone number or something for Sidney Armstrong?
She's upstairs in the administrative offices at the county building. Just, I don't have her phone, but she's the grant coordinator.
Right.
Maria, can I ask a question real fast for the mayor? Basically, I just want to know, was any of that money gonna be available to the city because of the fact, like you, you said that we've lost the, the cost for public safety sanitation costs? Have gone up with people being home, our protective gear. I've gone up, uh, with people being home, our protective gear for our fire department people, or even the city people, as well as the fact that we've lost, uh, several million dollars in sales tax and gasoline tax already because of the COVID nineteen. As of, end of March, we've already lost eighteen, let me give you the exact figure. Eight hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in just sales tax for the state of Florida. So we're gonna be hit hard with our next budget. Is there any money gonna be coming to the cities?
So the specific question was asked about the sales tax and there wasn't a real good answer, but the general consensus that it was probably gonna be no on the sales tax issue. There is a lot of other ways in terms of if we had to build barricades, if we had to do cleaning, if we had to take care of our parks in a different way to try to socially distance people, things like that. So, and I'm sure a lot of it's probably gonna be, you know, when in doubt, apply, um, and kind of let the, uh, let the state or the fed deny you. That sort of thing, but at the end of the day, you know, the county is gonna be liable, uh, to the state and the state's gonna be liable to the feds. And who the actual, um, is gonna bear the brunt of that responsibility is yet to be seen. I have a feeling it's probably gonna be the state more so than the county or the city, but, you know, it's, we, we just don't know yet.
Okay.
And you know what, Garrett, it's, it's, I've been in meetings ever since this thing started and you, you're right, it's, it's like a moving target. The rules change, everything changed within hours. So you, and when in doubt, apply anyway. That's what I tell people to do.
Yes. Exactly, exactly. Maria, you had something?
Yeah, I spoke to several of those people on the committee and, uh, you know, we had talked about doing a utility credit to the businesses inside the city limits and I asked the question if we would be able to use some of these funds, um, and maybe Sebring and Lake Placid would jump on it, that if we had a utility credit or some kind of check going out to businesses in a lump sum amount, whether it's based off of number of employees or not, um, with the maximum, remember, um, just to let the rest of the board know, uh, what they're doing right now with the county is they're kind of mimicking what Polk County has. So if you wanna see what Polk County is doing, that might end up being what we do here in this county and their, um, COVID money is already programmed and it's on their Polk County, uh, County Commission website. So you can kind of get an idea there. But anyway, going back to my question to them, if we were, let's say, to give two thousand dollars to every single, um, strap number business, we're not talking occupational license now because these would be people that have utility accounts with the city. There would be sufficient money in this first round of four point six million for the businesses of all of Highlands County if Lake Placid and Sebring jumped on board. If the money, like you said, Garrett, uh, ends up getting spent by September thirtieth, uh, what they said was that we could likely just get a big lump sum check to the city of Avon Park and then people come up and either apply for it and pick it up here, or we just give it to them as a credit on their utility that hasn't been hashed out. What I wanted to discuss with this council is if this is something that we might want to pursue for our businesses where it's, everybody gets it because we all know that some people won't apply. Uh, people have not gotten funded for other things in the past. There will always be one that falls through the cracks. I really don't want that for our businesses. And so if we were able to do this and the whole county jumped on board with this first section of funding, it might be doable, but I would need to have consent from the rest of the council for them to at least mull it over. And that's not to say that that's what the committee is gonna end up with, but if they knew that the city of, of Avon Park was pursuing it, then it would probably bode more favorably for us to do so. Uh, aside from the fact that we just did all these budget adjustments, we may not have the money that we anticipated to do any kind of credit. So if that's the case, um, and we get it by September thirtieth, there will be thirteen million, four hundred thousand dollars left over for the citizens of the county that can apply for rental relief or mortgage relief or in unemployment relief and all those other things. This, what I'm talking about for us would just strictly be expenses for utility. And, uh, one of the comments made to me was that, what about electrical utility? Well, we don't pay electric bills here and all we do is, is utility in terms of water and sewer, so you know, would the county just issue a two thousand dollar check to everybody? Would that be a, a, a feasible amount that we would request? I'm all of the opinion that we should request two thousand for our businesses and if they end up with a thousand, great. If they end up with five hundred, that's better than nothing, but it's a lot more than we could afford if we did it on our own.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I mean, right, and I, I, nobody's gonna, gonna doubt that. It's just, the only question comes up is, is, is the state gonna allow us to do it?
Yes, those are, they are allowable expenses. So I already looked into that part of it. It is allowable. Um, they're paying for access. By the way, Brenda, they pay for access to food banks. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, September, is it September this year or September next year?
Yes.
This year.
The thirtieth.
We got two years to spend our money.
No, not this one. This is a different fund. Yeah, and if we don't spend it, then it's gonna go to some other county that likely has.
Maria, did you get, did you get further call, uh, clarification as to showing a loss and what they were actually gonna require?
No, not on that. They're just talking at this point, uh, benefit to the businesses and to the citizens. Our losses would only be the expenses that we incurred, uh, spending money on COVID things. I don't think that, it's, it's not gonna be a taxable reimbursement of items that were never purchased. That, that was cut it.
Right, I'm, I'm talking about, if you'll remember, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about the individual businesses having to show a loss.
Right, and so that, that hadn't been decided yet. Uh, the one in Polk County does not have that and what they're doing is they're not penalizing people if they don't spend it the way they're supposed to spend it or if they default. These aren't loans. This is a flat out check for them to do what they want. So that part of it is Polk County, this one may want, we may wanna have, I say we, meaning the county. They haven't decided yet. They're waiting for others to get back with them to give them more ideas, but I don't think anyone's come from any city yet to say, hey, let's do it this way, but again, you know, if the kids, if the cities, both Lake Placid and Sebring, Sunland Lake, they don't have to if they don't want to, but if we all together, or at least one of us says this is what we'd like to do for our city, for our businesses, that will help them spend that four point six million really fast because right now they don't have a program in place, they don't have a grant application in place. They don't have the social or mechanical or human infrastructure to get it done anytime soon. So if they are able to carve out some money and give it to us now, then at least it'll get them to that four point six really fast, which will get them to that thirteen point four million after September the thirtieth. So that part right there is, is, is what helps them.
Yes.
We can help them spend that.
And if they're, if they're willing to, uh, you know, forego or lax the requirement that show, that every business has to show a loss particularly relating to COVID, then absolutely, I'm all for it. That was, that was my, that was my really one and only question, um, to that young lady was find that out for sure. If we have, each business has to come to us with some type of paperwork showing a loss and we have to verify that through the state or whomever, what exactly that looks like. And if, if we don't have to show that necessarily, or if there's an assumption that COVID's so big that everyone was affected, then yeah, by all means, you're right on track.
So one of the other things, I did speak to one of the banks and they're gonna jump in and see whether or not they can help. At least this is another prong of the issue. To me, the problem is it's getting the money out there fast. And so the banks already do those loans for COVID. A lot of people weren't able to get in on time. If you don't have an account with a particular bank, you cannot get the money and not all the banks are giving the money out anymore. So again, all those people that fell through the cracks just don't, won't see a dime. So if the bank jumps in, that might be another venue for people to go ahead and apply. And if it ends up being that way, that way, then maybe the two thousand max for any business can be through the bank. They do have the infrastructure to handle that. But anyway, uh, Brenda, it is a moving target and, and all the information provided to them based off of our conversation here would be helpful for them to help go where they go. But I was told specifically that if we have any desire, that we would like to see the money spent in a particular way for our businesses, put it out there now, get it in a motion. Whether or not it gets approved, it's up to that committee, but at least we got our foot in the door.
Exactly. I got you.
Okay.
So I don't know how to phrase it. I'd like to make a motion if that's okay, but I would request that the city council, um, have the committee consider um, a grant program that is, um, with a maximum of two thousand dollars per business that has a strap number slash, you, we'll know by the utility accounts, whoever has a utility account that's a business, would be eligible for two thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and call the roll.
What was that?
And what was that?
I heard a go.
So, hold on one second.
I guess someone's at his door. By the way, the commission meets on July the seventh to do the finalize, to finalize this. So there's a meeting this coming Wednesday at two PM in the county commission building. And then there's another one on Wednesday, the first, at two PM in the county commission building. Those two meetings are gonna kind of hash out how this money's gonna be spent and then it goes to the commission on July the seventh for final approval.
You say, tell me those dates again now?
Uh, July, uh, yeah.
The first meeting?
Uh, to, day after tomorrow, June the twenty-fourth at two PM and then July the first at two PM. Those are, that's this Wednesday and next Wednesday.
Yeah, at two.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion in a second. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous.
And then just one last thing, Garrett. Um, in terms of what goes to the citizens, I think that that is the program that we're talking about, showing your rent or your mortgage or stuff like that. I would hope that that thirteen point four hundred, that thirteen point four million that we really focus on that, perhaps we can come back to the council later on and see what we can do for our citizens. Personally, I think they should just take all the money and give every man, woman and child a check in the entire county, but we know that's not gonna happen.
Agreed.
Right? So that might be something they end up doing, but nonetheless, uh, we need to consider how our citizens will bore, will bear fruit out of this, this program, but.
Right. And it's, it's a first step, like you say, on a moving target, so I feel like we've made a good effort to, uh, go forward at this point. All we can do is request and, and we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Very good. Moving on to item number sixteen. We have the first reading of ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty. Jerry?
Yes, I, I'd like to go ahead and pull that from the agenda. Uh, we had agreed on the terms. Received the markup of our proposed, uh, initial draft of the agreement, industrial agreement and had some things in there, I think will also require tweaking the, uh, code. So just, I just simply pull it at this point.
Okay. Moving on to item number seventeen, regular update from city manager. Mark?
Okay, last meeting, you, you had, um, asked me and, uh, to consult with Carl on, um, getting one of our engineering firms to, uh, do the design and permitting for the, uh, downstream phase two. I got with Carl. We both agreed on Kembling Horn. They gave us a price of, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for the design and permitting and another five for construction phase, total in twenty thousand dollars, so that's taken care of there. The, uh, the church service center. After our meeting the next day, I spoke to Tom Fineran, who, um, also was actually on the Zoom meeting listening in. And then I also typed up a formal letter and sent it to him with, uh, your options. He was gonna take it to his board this past Thursday. Um, they liked what they heard and he's gonna get back to me here as of today. He hasn't gotten back to me, but, uh, they liked what council was presenting them. The, uh, I know I've talked to a couple of you on this, on the mowing with this, uh, Department of Correction inmates. Kinda gets a little crazy, but two Fridays ago, they said that, that the inmates were gonna be out on Monday and then on Sunday it called Robert and said they weren't coming out, but then they showed up on Monday anyways. So they worked Monday through Thursday out on twenty-seven and they got the south end on the north end done and this morning they were supposed to finish in town. But, uh, Robert got a call Sunday again and told me, or no, it was on Friday, said they're not coming back out because they've got a COVID case in the prison out here and with the numbers growing, so we don't know when they're gonna be back out.
Jeez.
Yeah. Wait, also, um, with the numbers going out, um, emergency operations center, we had been down to three days a week on our, um, conference calls, starting today, they're back to five days a week. Just a little throw in here, I wrote down that Dan, our, um, HR manager, thought he heard something drifting in our second floor bathroom up here last week and, um, well, David and, and Dan and I thought he was crazy, but then Dan went in and heard it. We called Robert's guy and roofs leaking at city hall. So, um, we're getting that, Robert's, um, getting some quotes on getting that fixed if, uh, he hasn't already, Robert. I haven't talked to you since that day. Um, but it looks like not in the near too future, the roof of city hall is gonna need replacing. So just put that out there. And, um, Dan, I've got you down here on updates on stimulus credits and I don't know if we're gonna go ahead with that now anyways after hearing that, but, um, if, uh, you all like an update on where Dan is on that.
Sure.
Go ahead. Okay, um, as far as the residential end, um, that is, uh, feels like that's in process like it's. They bill weekly, um, basically one quarter of the city gets billed every, every, uh, week. And that, uh, is a function of the meter reading process. Um, so when the meter readers go out, take the reading, they're basically doing sections at a time. So those are going out. Um, as far as the, uh, uh, businesses, um, we're still working on, uh, narrowing that down, uh, to those that qualify for the credit and those who don't. So, um, that one, uh, hasn't been, it's, we've got a list of all the properties within the, within the CRAs and, uh, now it's just a matter of, uh, basically, uh, narrowing down, uh, those, uh, commercial, uh, business licenses that have been issued to those uh, properties within the CRA.
So Dan, let me ask you a question in regards to that. If I go, if we go to the county and, and talk about the potential funding from this eighteen million dollar fund, we would need a different number, not just a CRA, but also everything else that's even outside the city. We would talk about every single utility account. Now, I know if you have an occupational license, you might have two occupational licenses in one building, so this one would have to be based off of actual accounts or maybe strap numbers, I'm not sure. So, you know, if we could have just one big number of every single business inside the city that we have an account with, then that's the number multiplied times two thousand dollars that would be taken to the county commission or to the committee for their consideration. So do you think we could have that by Wednesday?
Oh, I don't, oh. Cause, yeah, I asked, uh, uh, the appraiser's office for, uh, accounts within the CRA and, uh, that took a little bit, you know, what, it didn't take a lot of time, but, uh, you know, it was basically just a, a, a dump list of probably two thousand, uh, strap numbers. Uh, and then we kind of narrowed some of those down based on which were, because not all, you know, in the CRA, we were just focusing on CRA and I don't, I suppose they might be able to, to focus on, uh, use codes, but again, I don't know enough about their, uh, I'll, I'll just say their database to know if they can actually tell us how many businesses, uh, are, are in the city of Avon Park, you know, and I guess I, I was looking at that as maybe a countywide, uh, project, I guess, as I was listening earlier. It sounded like we were trying to get all three, uh, basically the whole county to agree to this, that? Or is it just Avon Park?
We're trying to get the whole county to agree. Uh, obviously we can only control Avon Park, so we were just more or less using our, uh, citizenry leverage to, uh, make that happen. Or attempting to.
Dan, let me ask you a question. We couldn't pull up from our water department, um, the total number of, of business accounts we have and go back there?
I think we can do that.
Yeah, that's all we need is.
That's all we need.
I mean, there, yeah, there might be some duplication because you might have, you know, an insurance agent, you know, with a real estate agent, two occupational licenses in one strap number. So, I mean, yeah, you could weed those out independent of one another, so, but at least if we have one big number, I think that would be helpful. I lost. I lost, I was for about three minutes there. Everything just shorted out on me.
I think I.
I was talking about.
I think.
No, I think I was, I was just stunned with silence stickers for about three minutes.
Yeah, everyone was frozen for me too. But anyway. I can talk to the clerk of courts or rather the deputy clerk of court and he might be, he's a tech guru. Maybe he can pull them up for us. He has all the records and everything. So maybe he can help. I can call him tomorrow and see if he can just get those numbers for us. At least he'll know who to contact.
But I know, I would think if we're just pulling water meter accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, just accounts, you know, and then we can figure out, typically when you pull up the account, it has an address. If there's a duplicate of an address, then just scratch that one out.
Yeah.
That's the same thing for the, all the businesses. But anyway, this would include, like I said, everyone outside of the city. It's all the accounts. Sebring can do theirs, Lake Placid could do theirs. And this is something that they end up doing. But it'll be nice to have this anyway.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else on that? Seeing none, continue on, Mark?
Um, I just, Rick, are you still on?
Yes, he is.
Can you hear me, Rick?
Microphone.
Unmute.
To get it unmuted, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make sure you were still with us. Hey, because this is the second time we've shut down Portion North Central Avenue in a shortage, I guess. Can you let council know what's going on there and what could become of it?
Okay, um, the past three months, we pulled, and I'm guessing, so you know, bear with me a little bit here. I'm guessing we pulled about 50 yards of sand out of there, out of one of the manholes, which is our gravity system. The gravity system is a system that comes from Walmart, which Nucor feeds to. And it comes from Lake Isis, which you know, the other lift stations feed to. And that's our main artery system that goes to Tulane. We've been pulling a lot of sand out of there. So about three, four weeks ago, we did a confined space entry, went down. And the city used to have a camera truck, but it's over 20 years old. We can't get parts for it. I tried rebuilding it for two months, you know, knowing that we were hauling this stuff out and I just, I just can't get parts for it. So anyways, we use a cheap rigid type camera and we shoved in there. And we found a cavern where the pipe section is totally missing and that's clay pipe. You're looking at a, at a gravity system that's put back in, in 1926 unless somebody put manhole lids on there that weren't the correct year that the system was put in. So you know, clay pipes real thin, it's brittle, breaks. So we've got a, it's not a sinkhole because it wasn't created by a underwater system. So it's a sinkhole due to the fact that a gravity system has rinsed the sand out. So we got an issue there that we're trying to resolve and we can't seem to get a camera truck in there due to the grease because we don't have a fog program or anything. And today we tried to plug up four different inverts and run successful due to all the grease in the, and then we came in, it was backed up because over the weekend, the sand had backed it up. So needless to say, we know we have a section of pipe that's missing. So when you have a piece of pipe that's missing and you have water flowing through it, it's going to cause a cavern, which could cause a sinkhole. So that's what we're doing right now is working on trying to figure out how bad that part of the system is. So I've left the road down just because of safety reasons and as well as for us, if we lose the road and it was too caved in. Then this, we would not be able to pass our sewage through there. So then we would have to set up pumps and close down the westbound lane and, and unite the, or integrate the eastbound to Tulane traffic. So we're in the process of trying to figure that out. It's just trying to get three quotes and nobody set up anything here for emergency services that I can find. If somebody knows of something, I sure would appreciate it. So trying to get bids and everything, I was trying to get this resolved in a relatively quick matter before we lose the road or lose it, lose the piping system and have to set a pump in the road and pump around that manhole and laying the pipe on top of the road. And then having to go back and dig it up. So we're looking, trying to get a company to give us some prices on pipe bursting, sleeving, other methods of, of doing things other than having to go through there and dig the entire road up. So that's where we are right now with that. And I'm sorry to inform you of that.
Okay. So what we have on the emergency clause in our procurement policy that if there is an emergency that you don't have to go to bid. So I mean, do you, are you planning on going to bid for 30 days or could you just use the emergency section?
You know, I'm working with Mark on that right now. That's all I can tell you is I'm trying to figure out what we can do right now. I'm just trying to get somebody in right quick to give me a video with, I can't, can't think of the word where they go through the name. What do you call that? Where they go through and they look at it and they tell you what all is wrong so you can send it out to bid. There's a word for it and I can't think of it. So that's what I'm trying to get done right now. So that we can, so that we know where we're at. And I'm also looking at possibly just piggybacking off in another city or county that we can piggyback off of on emergency services. So we don't have to go out to bid. So I'm hoping to try to get some, some stuff resolved tomorrow.
Basically what he's saying is we don't know what we need to do right now. He's trying to find out tomorrow to find out more information before we decide whether we got an emergency or what we have. So my main thing was just letting you know because it's the second time it's been shut down and it, it could be a pretty big deal. So.
Well, thank you.
Emergency purchasing is under section 140.20 of your purchasing manual.
Okay.
Take advantage of that. Which reminds me, I know you were, I, I lost you guys for a little bit. I don't know if all of you were on mute, mute. But Mark, you were making a comment about replacing the roof at City Hall. I mean, is it getting to the point where you're having like ceiling damage or anything where you might have to go in there and fix mold or something that accumulates later on or?
No, Robert, Robert will tell you what they found. It's just when he's up there, he came down and he said that, you know, I, I don't think he used the word eventually, but there's probably a roof that's going to be replaced. I'm not sure it needs to be done this year or not, but he was going to get a contractor up there. Look at what we had. Robert, you can add to the.
Yeah, can I, if I can step in real quick? Excuse me. Hey, we looked up there, water was dripping into the bathroom, coming out of the air conditioning unit. Cause the air conditioning unit, the overflow pipe was plugged up. So the water was actually leaking out of the unit, coming down through the ductwork. As we found out later on, after I talked to you, Mark, the water was coming in through the ductwork, dripping into the bathroom. Now that we've got the lines cleared out, that leak can stop. But the roof up there is regular torched down roof. We're losing everything off that torch there, all the little rockets on it. The roof is very old. I've got a roofing contractor on standby waiting on me to call him to go up there. I told him I wanted to check out some more things before I called him in. And what we found was that water was coming in through the air conditioned duct, not the actual roof itself. So we do not have a leak as of right now, but after the rains we've been having, I'm going up there tomorrow to take a look at it again. And determined to make sure we don't have a leak and we'll, we'll keep you informed on that.
Okay. When it comes time for quotes, I would just suggest that we go with a TPO roof over a torched down rubber roof.
Exactly. That's what I. We go to TPO on that.
Anything else on the City Hall or that road?
Just City Hall. Don't we have insurance if it is caused by storm? Could insurance look at that or is that out of the question?
I guess out of the question. The, the, the age of the roof would take it out of, out of the question on that for insurance. It's, it's.
Well, the brickle building got replaced and that roof was even more ancient than City Hall.
That roof actually got damaged by the hurricane.
Yeah.
Always got damaged by the hurricane.
All hope is not lost. The way that 2020 is going, we might very well have a hurricane.
Might as well. So the other question I had was, we had money set aside for rehabbing the windows and stuff at City Hall. And I think that that money is still in the budget. I mean, you know, pick your.
We actually have, have a bid out for the windows to be replaced. We're waiting on the bids to come in on that. So that money is going to be spent on windows as soon as we receive all the bids on that.
Okay.
I thought we did, I thought we did the bids last year for the City Hall windows.
No, it was this year.
It fell through.
It fell through. Okay. All I needed to know.
Anything else on the city manager report?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Is there anything else for the good of the city?
I do. I have something. I would like, I would just like to give a kudo out to the Avon Park Fire Department. I was, they, they came up and rescued a cat that I heard in a drain. And everybody was standing around and I said, don't y'all hear this? And they said, no. So but anyway, they got quiet and I heard the cat down there and I called the Avon Park Fire Department Saturday evening. And thanks to them, they came out and rescued that cat. And I'm scared of cats. And the first time the cat got out, he ran right toward me and I struck out running. So I would like to thank you to the Avon Park Fire Department.
Is the chief on? Chief, are you on here?
Yes, he's on.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, you're not gonna hear the end of this tomorrow, chief.
Yeah, I've heard. Well, we're happy to help. No problem.
Very good. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
Nope.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.